Mr. Kimball, could you call the roll?
Pleasure, sir. Mr. Lawrence?
Here.
Mr. Reitinger? Ms. Ward?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Do you all join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. All right, could I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in paper say aye? Aye, any opposed? All right. Now we move on to public comment. In accordance with School Board Bylaw 2.30, time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record. I would ask anybody who wants to speak to fill out a slip and state your name and address, and you have three minutes. First speaker is Mary Kate Hughes.
Please excuse my notes here, just want to make sure I'm prepared.
Okay, make sure the mic is on, or we will get yelled at.
There is a green light.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me well now? My name is Mary Kate Hughes. I live at 607 Knollwood Drive. I come to you tonight for two reasons. First is to thank you for the hard work that you did to pass a budget. I know that it was challenging work, and I appreciate your perseverance as a body to pass something that's best for our students. The second reason I'm here is to suggest some things that I think could lead to even stronger decisions, both from a process perspective as well as from an outcomes perspective. I come to you as a professional educator. I have 10-plus years of experience as a classroom teacher. I have five years of experience as a district administrator in a small district in Washington, DC. My specialty is curriculum and instruction, and when I think about the best decisions that I make as a professional, there is systematic and broad input, there is meaningful consideration of that input, and then there is a thoughtful response to it. So I'm accountable for my decisions and how they are based in the input that I have received. Three specific areas that I think we can employ this process. One is a survey that accounts for all of the voices that are impacted by the decisions that you make, school-based administrators, teachers, including paraprofessionals, all staff. It should happen annually, it should be administered by a third party, and it should yield reliable and actionable data for this board to make the most effective decisions to lead this school district. I know that some steps have been made in this direction this year, and I appreciate those steps. I think we can do even better. And, to be honest, I have a lot of opinions about what should be in the survey, but the most important thing is that the people who are impacted by it should be able to say, "This is what I would like to offer input on." If I was on a school board or in a central office, I would want feedback to me about how I was doing my job, and so I would like to see that included in the survey. The second thing that I think will lead to better process and outcomes is 360-degree feedback for our superintendent prior to her contract being renewed. This is a very common practice in high-performing districts, and I think it's very respectful to the person in charge for them to get rigorous and holistic feedback, because the best leaders want that input in order to be able to serve well. And the strongest boards want that information to be able to support and retain the kind of leadership that our district deserves. As someone with personal experience with 360-degree feedback, it really supports professional growth, relationships, and strong outcomes for our district. I look forward to hearing more about the input that you can receive and the response we can expect. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone else who wants to speak? Whether or not you fill out a slip, just raise your hand, walk up. No? All right, we'll close out the public comment and move on to mindfulness. Dr. Jones?
I am going to invite Sharon Hoffman forward, and she is going to share with you what we are doing with mindfulness.
Okay, hi, everyone. Thank you so much for inviting me to speak about mindfulness in general and also how we're implementing that in our schools. Just to give you an idea of what I'll be talking about today, I'll start off with a brief overview of what mindfulness is and how it works. I'll talk about the research-supported benefits of mindfulness practice. We'll go through a sample mindfulness exercise so you get a taste of the experience, and then we'll talk about how it's being implemented in Falls Church City schools to date and some goals moving forward. And then there will be some time for questions and comments after that. Before we get into it, I just want to ask you to check in with yourself and notice how you're feeling right now. I hope that most of you are just feeling so excited about this presentation, but you could have any number of feelings right now. You could be stressed about a long day at work, or worried about your kids, what they're having for dinner right now. It could be anything, so just take a moment to think about how you're feeling in this moment, and then either take a mental note of that or write that down. Okay, so let's talk about the definition of mindfulness, and I pulled two definitions that really resonate with me. The first one is from Mindful Schools. That's the organization that I did my coursework through. They're one of the preeminent organizations that is implementing mindful curriculum in educational settings. And the second definition is from a man named John Cabotson. He is considered kind of the father of modern mindfulness. So the first definition is a moment-by-moment awareness of our thoughts, emotions, sensations, and surrounding environment. And the second definition is pretty similar to that, but it adds on a little bit. That second definition is the awareness that emerges through paying attention on purpose in the present moment, and he adds on the thinking about doing that in a nonjudgmental way. So let's unpack that a little bit, because we really need to think about why is it important to notice thoughts and emotions and sensations? And so I want to take a step back and just talk about what attention is and what awareness is. And I like to use the imagery of a flashlight in the dark. So if you're at a campsite, let's say, and you need to get somewhere, you turn on a flashlight, and there is a particular tunnel of light in the direction that you're going, and then you might hear a sound in the distance, and you immediately react to that and turn the flashlight in a different direction. So that is much like your attention. You can focus on a particular thing, but if something comes up for you, it might take your attention elsewhere. So that's the same kind of process that happens for our students in the classroom. So we expect them to be paying attention to the teacher so that they can understand the instruction and learn, but there can be things, either external or internal, that take their attention away from the learning experience. The second bullet, I just posed the question, how many times do we tell kids to pay attention or tell them to calm down? And I actually ask this in the introductory sessions with the kids, and I get a laugh just like that, because we tell our kids all the time to pay attention. But then I ask them a follow-up question, and I ask them, "Who taught you how to pay attention, or have you been taught how to pay attention?" And it gets a little bit more quiet when they reflect on that. And the truth of it is that we really don't teach how to pay attention, it's just kind of expected that that comes naturally. Same thing with calming down. We might give a few strategies, but we don't give a lot of attention to those skills. And what mindfulness philosophy kind of talks about is that, like any skill that we have to learn, whether it's an academic skill or something with sports, you first have to learn how to do it before you can be expected to do it. So with mindfulness, you first start with learning how to notice what it feels like to pay attention, or notice what it feels like to be calm. And when you practice that over time, you really get a sense of what that feels like, and then you can notice when the opposite is happening. So you can tell the difference when you are paying attention and when you're not. And when you have that increased awareness, you can ask yourself at any moment, "Am I paying attention? Am I responding in a thoughtful way?" And when you have that awareness, there's a space for a choice in your response. So rather than responding in a reactive way, you can be more thoughtful in your response. So for a student that maybe has test anxiety, they can realize that they're starting to feel anxious, and instead of losing their focus on the task and showing what they're really capable of and what they know, they can take a moment, maybe do some mindful breathing, and refocus themselves for the task. So as you can see, the skills build on themselves, and this really has some pretty strong implications for a lot of things that we really want to support with our kids. Those are emotional and behavioral responses, social interactions, attention in general, and availability for learning, and of course, all of that is going to impact academic achievement. And just the last thing I'll say on some of the background information is that mindfulness really works on two levels. One level is the doing aspect, and the other aspect is the being. So what I mean by doing is what I just described in that previous example, that when you're in a moment where you feel like you need to refocus your attention, or calm your emotions or your thoughts, you can lean on the skills in the moment. But what we find over time is that if you continually practice those skills, it becomes more of a way of being. So what you'll find is that you're just generally more calm or more focused. And it's not a perfect science, because we're all human, so there will be times when you lose focus, or when you might react to something less skillfully, but the point is that you become aware of that, and you can make a different choice the next time. So I could spend a lot of time talking about the research, but I think what it really boils down to are some of these key points. The first one is that there's a lot of neuroscientific evidence that supports the idea that mindfulness practice actually changes the brain, and it strengthens the part of the brain that's responsible for attention. It's responsible for goal-directed activities, emotional control and flexible thinking, and all of those factors really not only influence a student's social-emotional well-being, but also their availability for learning. So you can see on here that there are some research-supported benefits, like focus and concentration, increased sense of calm, decreases in stress and anxiety, skillful responses to difficult emotions. And what is a really powerful thing about mindfulness is that it not only helps the student or the person who's practicing it, but when you realize what's going on for yourself, you develop a sense that there's other things going on for other people, and it can increase your empathy and compassion for others as well. So there's a list, I won't go through all of those. And I did include a video here that I would encourage you all to take a look at. I won't take the time now, but it's called "Just Breathe," and it is students who have gone through mindfulness curriculum and their thoughts on that process, and what they learned from their experience. Really powerful video. So now we're at the point where I thought that we could try this, so you could get an experience of what this might be like. We'll start with two of our most basic skills, and these are really foundational skills that we build upon, but these are really important because they're always available to you, and they're simple in theory. The first one is mindful posture, and the second one is mindful breathing, or we call it breathing at your anchor. And with mindful posture, that's about setting your body up to feel like it is possible to be both relaxed and alert. And when I work with the kids, I have them try out different postures, and what you'll notice if you give it a try is if you slump too much, kind of feeling lethargic and that you're not really ready for the information coming at you. And if you're kind of too rigid in your posture, it alerts your body that there might be something like a threat in the environment. So we like to be somewhere in between that. And so mindful posture, if you're in a seated position, would be your feet flat on the ground, not moving. Your arms would be kind of comfortably at your sides, and your hands rested in your lap, or on the desk, whatever, more comfortable for you. And your spine kind of elevating towards the ceiling, almost like a tree is growing through you, so that your head is kind of heading up towards the ceiling. But again, just noticing what that feels like and the difference for you, not being too rigid and not being too slumped over. And the last part of that would be closing down your eyes. Before we do that, I'll also just give you a preview of what mindful breathing is like. So mindful breathing is really a foundational skill, because breathing is something that's always available to us, no matter where we go. And we talk about it in terms of being an anchor, just like how you would envision that a boat in the ocean. So with a boat, it's on the surface of the water, and it might rock back and forth a little bit, but if it's anchored in place, no matter how stormy it gets, it might move around a little bit, but it's not going to go off to sea. So we think about the breath in the same way, that we might be faced with difficult experiences or thoughts or emotions that may rock us a little bit, but if we can focus on our breathing, it keeps us centered and ready to respond thoughtfully. So I invite you to just join in in this experience. So we'll start with our mindful posture. So again, that's feet flat on the floor, your arms comfortably at your sides. Feet, or, I'm sorry, your hands in your lap. Feet would be very difficult, you'd be very flexible. Feet in your, no, I did it again. Hands in your lap, or on the desk. Your spine elevating towards the ceiling, and your eyes closed down. Okay. And so, once your eyes are closed, what I'm going to do is just ring the bell. This is something that we do as part of our practice, just to kind of set the tone that we're in our kind of mindful space. So I will ring the bell. And now that you no longer can hear the bell, what I'm going to ask you to do is try to focus your attention on your breath, where you feel it most strongly in your body. For many people, that might be at your belly. For others, it could be at your chest, and for some, it's at your nose. But I just invite you to take some breaths, noticing where you feel your breath the most. And now that you've chosen a place, at least for now, what I want you to do is just try to keep your attention at that anchor, so where you're feeling your breath in your body. And what you may notice is that some thoughts are beginning to arise, no matter how much you want to keep your attention at your anchor, and I want to normalize that for you. That's the point of this exercise, is to notice what happens for your mind and for your attention. And so when you notice that, that is mindfulness. That's your awareness, and I just invite you to bring your attention back to your breath. Now, I'll give you a few more moments, just to notice that feeling, and then listen for the sound of the bell again, and that will be your invitation to open your eyes again. Okay, so now I want you to check in with yourselves again, and I want you to notice what you're feeling in this moment, and it could be anything. I want you to think about, after you've kind of identified how you're feeling, compare that to how you were feeling before we began this process. For some of you, you might not feel anything different, and that's okay, and I say that to my students too, because like I said in the beginning of this, this is a practice, it's a skill that takes time, and so I just encourage you to keep an open mind and know that it takes some practice before you can really feel it. But for those of you that did notice a difference, I want you to think about how powerful this practice can be, if you noticed a difference either in your mood or your mindset, or just how you were feeling in the moment, just based on a couple minutes of noticing your breathing. So now I'll transition into how we are implementing mindfulness in Falls Church City. So this actually only began last year, and it started with a super grant from the Education Foundation for online curriculum training through mindful schools. And since that time, we've really been piloting a lot of different initiatives. It started with some small group counseling for at-risk students, and we also integrated the practice into IEP counseling sessions. We wanted to really get the information out there, so there were some parent-university offerings, and kind of the interest and the knowledge in the community, both professionally and with parents, really increased, so additional educators began some coursework. This year, we've done a lot more. So it started this August with division-wide professional development for some of our educators. Really proud of this second bullet. We're doing a research study with George Mason University and an IB site class over at the high school, and those students are being exposed to mindfulness curriculum on a weekly basis throughout the year. And at regular intervals, we are looking to see their attention, perceived stress, self-compassion, and mindfulness skills, and we're going to analyze that data this summer to help us really think about our implementation and our practice for next year. With that, we've done some long-term mindfulness curriculum in several classrooms across the district. We've continued our counseling groups. We presented at the Virginia School Board Association for the Signs of Success Poster Symposium, and lots of presentations around the district to help parents understand the process and just get the word out there. So looking forward to next year and beyond, again, we'll be looking at the study data to inform our implementation moving forward. We're going to continue with professional development opportunities, really want to expand student access to the curriculum, and encourage parental and community involvement through presentations. And I'd really like, as my own professional goal, to work with my fellow educators to help with self-care, so working with teachers for this practice, to help them with the stressful jobs that we all do, but it's all meaningful, so to help them with that. So that's what I have for you tonight, and I, again, really appreciate the time that you gave to the subject. Are there any questions or any comments?
Do you want to have any questions? I've got a couple, but. Mr. Reitinger?
Thank you very much. It was a great presentation, and I always appreciate a chance to meditate, especially during a school board meeting. The, I was, it's the second time I've had a chance to see this, because I saw it at the Health and Wellness Committee meeting, and I had some experience with mindfulness before. My personal thoughts on mindfulness are that it's an incredibly powerful technique for a number of different reasons, including that, you know, there's an increasing number of kids that have attention-related issues, and this can help them, and that particularly involves Falls Church City schools, and this was discussed at the Health and Wellness Committee meeting. There are a lot of schools that have significant problems with drugs and alcohol, and we have some of those problems too, we're certainly not immune, but arguably, the greatest problem we've got, particularly at the higher levels of schooling, is stress. And this is a great way, I think, to help manage stress, because you can objectify it and you can deal with it, but I'm talking to someone who knows more about it than I do. My question is really, you talked a little bit about what 2016 and 2017 looks like in the future, but I'm wondering a little bit more what the goal is. If you think about, we're an IB school, there isn't a mindfulness school, but if we were a mindfulness school, if we focused on self-awareness as a means of dealing with stress, of dealing with attention, of helping people manage the day better, what would that look like? And I know you're, you know, only in year two of the process, and you want to see what the data looks like, but have you started to think through, you know, how this might mold the actual school experience in Falls Church City over a course of many years?
Yes, absolutely. So I think it aligns, and we have Summer here with us, it aligns really nicely with our initiative for positive behavior intervention supports, and how we'd like to help our educators help our students, so rather than just relying on me as a specialist coming in to a classroom because I can only be in so many places, really helping my fellow educators to learn the practice and then help the students with that. And I see that being helpful in two ways. One, just the skill development, but secondly, because it really, if a teacher kind of has this mindset and embodies these principles, that just the general classroom atmosphere would be one that would promote lower stress and emotionally safe environment. So I think there's a long way to go to get to that process, but we're in that process and looking forward to it.
Okay, but even though you're doing the survey or the test with George Mason, well, with George Mason and George Mason, this can go all the way down to pre-K very easily, and to a certain extent, the little ones would be more receptive, because I think it would be, A, more enjoyable and good for them, and that would also mean, going forward, they would get it more as they got older, rather than, you know, someone coming in at eighth grade and hearing it for the first time, and then having four years, and they're gone.
Right.
So the idea is, this is not upper grades are limited, it's across the board.
Yeah, the curriculum that I went through with mindful schools, it's actually pre-K through 12, and it's divided into different curriculums that's developmentally appropriate based on the ages. We already have it in TJ and Mount Daniel, so the next step would be to get it into Jesse Thackeray, to get it with our littlest ones, too.
Now, is there any professional education continuing ed credit that teachers can get for studying this? Because I know that's something you've got to do constantly.
Yeah. Yeah, so you do through mindful schools, and there are other programs out there, too, that I do think that you can get professional development and recertification points. So yes, that's available.
Okay. Anyone? Lawrence? No? Anyone else? Margaret?
So I just would like to know how you, how this works in the classroom? Is it incorporated into a lesson plan, or is it taught separately, or both?
So as it's standing right now, I'm going into the classrooms and delivering the particular curriculum, so it starts with a check-in on how things have been going, and then we talk about a new skill, and we practice it, and then the kids get kind of a mindful challenge for the week ahead, but then I leave the classroom. So kind of the follow-up is whatever teacher is in that classroom is encouraging the students to practice throughout the week. I know the teachers that I've been working with now are trying to embed it into the day, so it might be, you know, coming in from recess and trying to get kind of recalibrated for the day, or before tests, or things like that. So what we're doing now, like I said, is kind of the more targeted skill lessons, but then helping them generalize the skills by practicing it over the week. Yeah, you're welcome.
Can I just say something? One of the other things that...
One of the other things that I think would be very helpful, if we could, if I could work with Sharon and our counseling department, K-12, to get maybe our counselors trained in mindfulness as well, because then they would be able to implement that in their programs when working with student groups, as well as working with staff when things are going on. So I think that would be another place to really build capacity in mindfulness training. So that's something that we'll be talking about.
We have some of our social workers who are going through the process, but yeah, the more people that are trained, the better. Thank you.
Now, do we offer this kind of training also to daycare staff? Or if we don't, could we? Because they obviously really, really need it because they get the kids at the end of a stressful day or at the very beginning when they're extremely energetic.
So, we haven't yet, but that's a fantastic idea. I really want to kind of expand this to target more people. So that would be a really great goal for next year.
Okay, great. Anyone else? No? Just one final question. My son has gone through this, especially, you know, middle of SOLs now, so the fact that he got to do this before it all started was great. What about parents? What are you hearing from them? Because I could see them, not having gone through it, not necessarily understanding it, unless they went to the parent university.
Right.
Do they seem to get it and understand why it's a good idea?
Yeah, I was actually really pleased with that. In all of the presentations that I've done so far, people have really not only seemed open to the idea, but really were asking questions, like, how do I get this in the hands of my kid? How do we, you know, get this out there for more of our students? So, I think it really is about empowering the community by helping them with the knowledge base. So, understanding why it works, how it works, and what it looks like. And with that knowledge, people really do seem to be on board with it.
Okay. Anyone else? No? All right, and her presentation will be on Board Doc, so we can get the link to the video? Okay. Well, great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, right now, we're going to go into a closed meeting, but it will be a short one, I would guess, five to 10 minutes at most. Could someone read us in?
Mr. Chair, pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the Board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose: to discuss or consider identified subject matter personnel under Section 2.2-3711, Section A, Subsection 1, in particular, staff appointments, staff reassignments, staff resignations, staff retirements, EPED assignments, and advisory committee appointments, and student matters under Section 2.2-3711, Section A, Subsection 2, in particular, appeal in accordance with School Board Bylaw 1B.4.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Did you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Ankuma.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
Ms. Ward. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll be right back.
We'll need a motion.
We had a motion to reconvene and open. Do we just do that by voice vote and then certify?
Normally, there hasn't been a voice vote, but you can certainly have a voice vote for the reconvened.
Okay, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed? No? All right, could somebody certify the meeting, please?
Certify. Okay?
Mr. Chair, whereas the Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711, Subsection B of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the School Board, that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City Public School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies; and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. Mr. Kimball?
Mr. Ankuma.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
Ms. Ward. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Now, moving on to approval of daycare advisory board fees. Oh, I'm sorry. I would ask unanimous consent that the consent agenda be approved. Seeing no objection, so ordered. All right. Onto instructional resources.
And I think we're going to invite Ms. Manos Ward, or Ms. Hi. Okay, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. I'm happy to have with me a few members of the Language Arts Cadre to attend the meeting to share with you the selected materials for writing program. And tonight, we'll be talking about K-5. I just want to say a special thank you to the ladies who came out tonight. We have Summer Manos, who's our RTI intervention specialist; Phyllis Krawinski, who is the TJ reading specialist; Sarah Parrish, second grade; Laura McNamara from kindergarten; and Kelly Marple from first grade. The cadre has 29 members, which is composed of teachers and elementary administrators and central office administrators, which is Summer and I. Well, not... Summer's not administrator, I am, but Summer from central office. We began our work in December to review, pilot, and select writing materials. I'm going to turn it over to these wonderful ladies to present to you tonight on the two programs that we've chosen.
Hi.
Hi.
We have a very brief PowerPoint that I'm trying to get to work, which it should work, right? Before... There it is. Yay! Before we start the PowerPoint, however, I'm going to ask our teachers to come up and share with you just to kind of kick off the writing materials. Let me go ahead and... To... Present is all the way over. Where's present? All the way over. Oh, why isn't it coming up? No, it's not. Guess not. Okay, work. Do I have to connect? Yeah.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kelly Marple. I'm a first-grade teacher at Mount Daniel. Laura's here as a kindergarten teacher at Mount Daniel. We used the Units of Study, and I've used it in my classroom for over two years now, which is the Lucy Cockens program that we're going to be implementing, and we love it. The format series is very user-friendly. The books in this series are sequenced to build students' writing skills over the course of an entire year. That's what it looks like there. Each lesson includes a focus for instruction, a step-by-step teaching script, conferring suggestions, and follow-up teaching points. And the lessons are sequenced to build students' skills and confidence as a writer. I found this to be an amazing program for my first graders. They come in barely able to write, and they're writing novels. They're writing books that are like 30 pages long. I'm not kidding. I'm not exaggerating. Some of the things we love, the rubrics, so we can push or remediate our kids based on what they need. Student exemplars, so our kids have authentic examples of what their writing should look like. In-depth mini lessons that really teach our kids to refer back to mentor texts to get ideas of what great writers do. And they do this all the time now. They're constantly looking into books to say, oh, I saw an ellipses in this book. Or I saw, you know, they put big bolded words in here. That means that this and that. They really engage in this, and they do it in their own writing now. That comes with CD ROMs, with resources, and the mentor texts are included in the package. But they really... The main thing is that students become creative, confident writers, and they're independent in their writing skills. It's been an amazing program to implement. And with my PYP background, I love it because it fits in perfectly with the PYP. So, all in all, I just think it's fantastic. And Laura's going to expand a little bit more on kindergarten.
I mostly am just echoing what Kelly has to say. They have used it a little bit more in first grade so far because this was just... This was the first year that we started exploring actual writing curriculums. So, we're excited because they have all sort of become experts, and through, you know, working collaboratively, they've learned a lot, and we're excited to work with them next year. I also just wanted to say that we have, in kindergarten, we use... Or we're going to use talking, drawing, writing as our framework at the beginning of the year, and we feel that it's sort of seamlessly... It works really seamlessly with Lucy Cockens and Units of Study. And I also just wanted to thank Ms. Hi because we feel really excited that we've been allowed to choose more than one curriculum within the grades. I feel like this was a relatively authentic selection process, and I think it highlights the importance of curriculum choices based on the needs of students, rather than just the sake of uniformity throughout the grades. So thank you for that opportunity in our choice. And we will look forward to sharing feedback with you next year. And I also... This has nothing to do with writing curriculum, but I wanted to say thank you for the mindfulness presentation. I practice yoga sometimes, and I... With my kindergarteners, I do a pose called Savasana, which really brings the attention to their breathing. And it is incredible how much it can really center them and calm down a room. So thank you for sharing that.
Hello, my name is Sarah Parrish, and I'm a second-grade teacher at TJ. I'm happy to speak with you all this evening about being a writer and why we feel like it's an excellent choice for TJ, for our students. The goals of the Being Writer program are to help students to grow as writers and also to be caring members of the classroom community. Being a writer is modeled in the Writer's Workshop model so that teachers are delivering a targeted mini lesson. Students are writing independently, and then at the end of the workshop, students share and reflect on their writing. While students are writing independently, teachers conference in with students one-on-one. Being a writer comes with a set of fantastic mentor texts, which teachers have found to be really beneficial. Having that high-quality literature to show students examples of wonderful writing and to help show and highlight those targeted skills has been really great to have those right at teachers' fingertips. Being Writer supports all learners. Each lesson highlights vocabulary and other ways to support our English-language learners. The lessons also provide extension for stretching or high-achieving writers. Grammar and mechanics is also embedded throughout the program. Being a writer is built around the same philosophy as the Units of Study. So we feel like this will be an excellent complement in grades 2 to 5 to kindergarten and first grade using the Units of Study. The program really provides excellent support for teachers as well. Each lesson is very clearly structured so that... To help support teachers deliver effective instruction, to help teachers figure out ways to conference with students, what skills to target students with when, and also provides assessments, such as rubrics to use in the classroom, such as self-reflection, to help students take ownership of their own learning. There's also resources such as online videos that show sample lessons, so this will help support teachers as well. When I've used it in my classroom, I've found that the support built within the program for me as a teacher has been very helpful in improving my writing instruction. And I think this will be helpful for all the teachers at TJ, to teachers who are new to Falls Church City Public Schools, and also to teachers who are new to teaching writing. This program really gets students excited about writing. The mentor texts, like I said, again, have been really excellent examples of writing that have motivated my students to feel like they can become writers, too. This fits very nicely with the PYP program as well. For example, our transdisciplinary theme of who we are works really well with the personal narratives. So we feel that it'll fit really nicely with our focus on PYP. And the emphasis on the reflection and sharing also helps to support students in developing the learner profile traits to help them become reflective learners. We feel like this will help us provide effective instruction for all students. This will help provide students... Teachers with support that they need to reach every learner. And we feel like this will help students find success and love in writing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now I'm ready with the PowerPoint. We're going to pick up where we left off. So thank you again for the opportunity to come and speak with you. These ladies, as well as their colleagues, have really devoted a lot of time and energy to this process this year, and I just wanted to spend a few minutes highlighting that. So, the writing materials adoption process really started back in the fall when we brought the entire cadre together. And we kicked off looking at three programs in particular. And then, we made sure that all of the teachers or teacher teams had samples of the resources to pilot within their classrooms. And then we also made several site visits to other elementary schools that were utilizing these resources so that we could look at them in action. It was really powerful. We went in groups, and I'm pretty sure all of you participated in those visits as well. And it was really interesting to not only watch the programs being implemented, talk to the educators, talk to the specialists, and then be able to kind of debrief and talk amongst ourselves about what we saw when we watched those programs being implemented. We then brought in all the vendors in March and had all of the vendors of these resources give us presentations about the resources. We met together as a cadre to have a work session where we worked together in collaborative teams and really went through the resources and went through kind of a... Just a pros-cons list, and how does this lend itself to our priorities when it comes to writing resources fitting into our balanced literacy, language arts framework? We then sent out, Lisa created a really nice ballot and sent out a ballot to all of our K-5 teachers and asked all of them to vote on the resource that they felt was going to be the best fit for their students. And so, we took that information from all of the teachers at Mount Daniel and at TJ. Then we reconvened again as a cadre to have another work session. Then we placed the materials on display at both Mount Daniel and TJ for any community member to view them. And then, we are here now in May, hoping that you approve these resources. And we're planning to reconvene again in June to come up with our next steps. So what do we... What does this look like moving forward for our teachers? As far as what do they need as far as collaborative time to really dig into these resources and look at how to use them in the classes? What kind of professional development do we need? And so that will be our next steps as a cadre when we reconvene in June, is to kind of plan our next steps for really implementing these and getting these resources in the hands of our teachers so that they can use them with their students. For your information, this is our cadre. Lisa already mentioned it is 29 educators from the elementary schools. And then we also have some key reading specialists, special ed teacher, ESOL teacher, some certs, and then a handful of administrators as well. So these are the folks that make up the Language Arts Cadre. And Phyllis, is this you? Okay, and I'm going to turn it over to Phyllis Krawinski.
Good evening. My name is Phyllis Krawinski. I'm one of the reading specialists at TJ. I'm also the Language Arts cert at TJ. And I've also taught first grade at Mount Daniel. So, I feel good that I can talk to all the grades that are being represented here tonight. And we're going to just talk about the two programs that were chosen. And I think the teachers did a great job of explaining them. I know I don't have a lot to add, but I feel really comfortable that although there are two programs, they are very complementary, and they really do connect between the grades, and they have good reasons for choosing the two. The Units of Study comes from the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project at Columbia University. And I was lucky enough to go to an institute a few summers ago when they were rolling out their new edition. And it's a fabulous writing program. And I'm not going to read all of the comments. These are actual comments from the teachers on the cadre. But one of the things that my experience with the Units of Study, and I think the teachers showed you as well, is it really builds a joy of writing. And if you've ever sat with a first grader who does not want to write, it can be... And it's not... I mean, it's funny, but it's not. It can be an excruciatingly painful process for a very small child that I think can carry forward for a long time. If you leave first grade thinking that writing is a terrible thing to do, that's a lot... That's a big hill for the second-grade teacher to then have to climb. When I've used the Units of Study, and I think Kelly would agree, and Laura, in first grade, they think that writing is a fun thing to do. It is not a chore. There's a lot of choice. They get to write about things that are important to them and that they're passionate about. So, I think that's true for both of those programs. But the Units of Study in kindergarten and first grade sends kids to second grade that think that writing is fun and that it's something that expresses them and what they think is important. So, that's how we can... And as I said, it fits in very well with the PYP. There's a lot of support for all the populations. Writing is a very individualized product. It's not a book. It's not a book. You don't hand it to them and they read it. They produce it. So, wherever they are in the process, if all they can do is draw a picture and label it, that's what they do, and they feel successful as writers. If they're ready to write three pages or five pages in first grade, they can do that. It's self-extending. So, I think that's true of any good writing program. I'm gonna, you know, you know why I'm not the technology person at TJ. Being a writer is based on the units of study. I'd say the biggest difference is that the teachers manuals are a little bit more, I don't wanna use the word scripted, but there's a little bit more support for the teacher in the teacher's manual. It is, they're both genre-based writing, which means you'll do a unit on personal narrative, you'll do a unit on nonfiction writing, you'll do a unit on persuasive writing. And the Being a Writer program was modeled after the units of study. So, they're very complimentary. One of the differences, I think, for the Being a Writer, the units of study has some mentor texts, but a lot of the writing examples that the children are seeing are examples of teacher writing. There's teacher writing in the Being a Writer program, but Being a Writer has a lot of mentor texts. And one of the things that I think is really great about that is that as the students are in second through fifth grade, the focus in the reading side of the house, it's always about comprehension. It's always the most important, whether you're in kindergarten or fifth grade. But as they get older, the comprehension demands become more challenging. So, using text to guide their writing forces, I shouldn't say forces, but requires that students really break the text down so they really understand it. So, I think that Being a Writer program does a great job of combining reading comprehension and understanding text and using that to write. And I'm just gonna show, try to explain what I mean. For instance, if they're gonna do a nonfiction writing piece and they're using this book as their mentor text, they then have to really understand, why did this author put these headings here? Because if I'm gonna put a heading in my book, I need to understand why that's there. They need to understand why the author might have put a map in their book. Because if they wanna put a map in their own student work, what's the purpose of that map? You don't just put it in there because it looks good. It has a purpose. So, I think that these mentor texts are really great for helping them learn to write, but it also helps them learn to read because they really have to break down the books and understand why they're written the way they are so that they can use those great qualities for their own writing. I think that's all I have. And then, as I said, the teachers, Thomas, anything else to add? So, if you have questions for us? Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? As always, I've got a couple if no one else does, but Mr. Writinger, I can rely on you.
I actually don't have any questions. Thank you. It sounds like a very inclusive process. I just wanted to, it's nice to get out of budget and into being a school board again. So, I appreciated the presentation very much.
I brought the samples on purpose, just so you would have something.
Something to read. If you'd like to read about reptiles, they're right here.
Okay. Anyone else? Michael?
Yeah.
Two questions. One was, in one of your slides, you mentioned about ESOL. If you could talk more about that, because it seems like getting that as early as possible, especially on something like writing and the concepts behind it, is really key. So, that's the first thing. The second one is, you started in December, but why? I mean, what suddenly prompted people to say, we need to move? Is it in a different direction? What we were working on with didn't work? Or, I mean, this seems like something that is huge, is gonna last for years. What prompted it? I mean, I think it's great that it happened, but I'm just curious, is do people suddenly get together in the halls and realize, I've seen this, you've seen that, we need to start working? How does it start?
Well, I think when we started the language arts curriculum review with the reading piece of the puzzle, it was always our intention to look at the entire language arts block of time, meaning the reading, the writing, and then word study or spelling. But we felt that giving three new things to teachers in the same time would be overwhelming. So, we went through this process. We adopted the benchmark literacy for the reading side of the house, always with the intention of circling back to look at writing programs so that we would have, I mean, I think that most buildings, grade levels, have things that they're currently using for writing. It's not as if they're not using anything. But what we don't have is something that is consistent from grade to grade so that if you, if you are in fourth grade, you know what your students should have been doing in third grade with being a writer. And the other part of both of them is they really have strong components for building a writing community. So, hopefully, you are, you're building a community of kids that are supporting each other in writing. But in answer to your question, I think it was because we started with reading and now we've moved on to writing.
It's been a journey. And to piggyback on what Phyllis said about the community of writers and your initial question about ESOL learners and how does this, how do both of these programs support ESOL learners? One of the things that I noticed and I thought was really powerful when we observed is in both of these programs with building that class community, there's lots of opportunities for students to talk before they write. So, a real focus on language and students are communicating, they're paired up, they're partnered, and then they're able to kind of talk about what they're gonna write, and then they go to write it. And so, we actually observed in a school that has a significant ESOL population, and it was amazing to see all these students really through that fostering of a writing community and the fact that it is so differentiated. So, every student writes at their own level, at their own pace. And then there's a lot of support from the teachers as far as more specific vocabulary or resources to support students that need more language support.
There are actual, like, bits in each lesson, you know, to support your ELL students, and it will give you specific tips. But I think the oral language piece, giving students a chance to talk about their writing with their writing partner, is an excellent scaffold for English-language learners. Because if they can say it, they are more likely to be able to write it.
Add anything to that?
No, I think you're right. It's just, it's more of an oral, with the Lucy Cawkins units of study, it's definitely an oral component, which really helps the ESOL students. And then they know, like, they talk through what their sentence is gonna be, and then they write their sentence. It might not be perfectly spelled, or, you know, spaces between words might still be coming through, depending on where we are in first grade. But it's definitely in there, and it's all based on speaking and talking and talking through what you're gonna write about and understanding how to write.
Okay, and so, final question, just 'cause I love both writing and reading. How do you sort of ease this in at the upper grades, given that they haven't had it from K to five? People are coming in at, you know, five next year. They're gonna have something that they haven't spent four years getting prepared for.
Each kid is a self-contained. So, each year, we'll start with that, building a classroom community at a developmentally appropriate level. So, the first unit will be, you know, whatever, however they've modeled, structured that for fifth grade. But it starts as if you haven't been doing this for five years. That, so if they're gonna build a classroom community, they're gonna start in fifth grade. Now, our hope is that if they do this from kindergarten, that by the time the kids get to fifth grade, that unit would hopefully be really short because you've built your writing community. They know how to have a writing partner. They know how to help each other edit. But if you don't, if you haven't been doing it this way, it's built into that program to start anew. That makes sense.
Okay. Yeah, no, that makes complete sense. It's great to think that kids are gonna come in here at K and, you know, graduate at 12. It just doesn't always work that way.
Yeah, no, no, it doesn't. So, there's, it's in there for them to start from scratch if they have to.
Okay. Anyone else? No? All right, well, thank you very much. This is, this is great.
Thank you all.
Oh, sorry. Could I get a motion to approve the instructional resources, please? Feverish competition.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board approve the following instructional materials. K-1 units of study for teaching writing by Lucy Cawkins, published by Heinemann, and two to five being a writer for the Center for the Collaborative Classroom.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Writinger, Mr. Webb. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right. Thank you. You've got a lot of work to do. All right, moving on to memo from the auditors. Dr. Jones.
And Mr. Campbell, feel free to jump in. This is just an item really for, just to draw your attention to, as informational. There were some public comments made at a city council, at least one city council meeting, wanting the schools to be audited, as well as the city. And the city attorney did address it at that meeting, but Mr. Campbell and I, in working with Mr. Castillo, the chair, thought it would just be useful to have an audit information letter on the school board agenda so that our community does understand that we do go through an audit every year. And this is a memo put together by Brown Edwards, just to give you an idea, that they do look at all of our investment accounts, our debt balances, that they look at our accounts receivable, accounts payable. They do spend time interviewing us separately, independently, and spend time going through pretty much anything that they want in our financial area. So, Mr. Campbell, do you have anything to add to that?
Only that, to be honest, you know, the auditors are onsite a couple of times throughout the years. They will be here in June doing preliminary information, doing preliminary audit work, looking at transactions, usually up through the end of March. They also, as part of the process, review all the school board minutes, and if there are any, any particular actions relating to financial matters that the school board has taken, they then will verify that, in fact, those did take place as intended. They then are back in the summer doing some more internal audit work with the schools. And then finally, in the fall, once, once we've closed out the books for the year, they are back again for, you know, another, you know, another set of tests and looking at things. You know, to be honest, once they, once the auditors come in and, and work and leave, my staff and I really feel like we've been put through our paces. They dig into payroll, they, you know, do tests and make sure and question a lot in terms of, you know, it says, you know, this person should have been paid this much, they were only paid this much, what happened? And that we, you know, we have to go in and demonstrate either, you know, whether there was a mid-year change, whether there was leave without pay, things like that. You know, from our perspective, it is, it is, it is a rigorous process, keeps us on our toes. And, you know, to be honest, and I've told this to a number of people over the years, when I first came to work for the school system and, you know, the auditor, audit from where we're with at the time was coming, and the general air in the office is, oh, the auditors are coming, the auditors are coming. In fact, you mentioned the word auditor to somebody, and, you know, they automatically freeze up. And what I have come to understand and realize is really, you know, the auditors are such a great resource, not only for me and my staff, for the school board, for the organization, if there are any, you know, questions about, down to very, you know, finite regulations and interpretations, you know, appropriate processes to follow. They are, they are an excellent resource, and they're really, they're not, not so much, I realize now, not to necessarily catch us, but to make sure that we are doing our jobs and that we can, in fact, improve our processes from one year to the next.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ancom.
So, Hunter, this, and it categorically states here that the, the schools, I'm assuming is a component unit of, which is essentially a legally separate organization for which the primary government is financially accountable. We get the, I guess, the municipality gets the CAFER. Is that right? The Falls Church City.
That is, that is correct.
Right. But are the schools is built into that as a separate unit within, within that. I guess my question is, the level of scrutiny, that, does that rise to the level of an audit itself? And the only reason we don't have a separate audit is the fact that we're a component unit.
That is, that is exactly. And, and in fact, because, you know, we are, you know, more than joined at the hip with the general government, I mean, we, you know, we just share the same accounts, the same finance software, you know, many of the same procedures, same thresholds, that, in fact, the process that, to which, you know, the city is subjected is exactly the same process we are. Now, there are different, you know, different, you know, things they, they look at. You know, the school board does not issue debt, per se. So, for example, with bonding and those sorts of things, the city, you know, focuses on those, and we don't really get into that. But it's really all, when they're looking at us, they're over here working with the city, and the audit staff go back and forth between the two bodies.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Writinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Campbell, do we track audit findings and gradually remediate them and track when they're remediated? Or are the, have the audit reports not been of the sort that have found material weaknesses and produced findings that we would wanna make sure we remediate over time?
Reports have, in fact, identified areas of, and made recommendations. And they do, in fact, differentiate between, you know, this, this is a concern versus, you know, you absolutely have to do something about that. I will tell you an item that comes up every year and will continue to come up every year, and that has to do with segregation of duties, simply because both on the, in the general government side and on the, on the school side, we are so small and have a limited number of staff that, that segregation of duties has become a challenge. We feel that we have addressed it appropriately through assistance of checks and balances and, you know, as payroll is processed or other, other payments are processed, that the person who, you know, issues the bills does not also make the deposits, things like that. But honestly, it is a challenge, but, you know, balancing the segregation of duties and also having, having backup. But there have been, over the years, a number of recommendations that are, that come out of the audit report.
So, do we, to get a little more detail, do we, do we track them so we have basically a spreadsheet that says, you know, an audit finding or a material weakness, and then, you know, what we've done about it, and then sort of, you know, whether the recommendation is to accept, transfer, or do something else with the risk so that, you know, the board could essentially see what actions had been taken and say, yes, do more, do less, or we'll accept the risk for that because we don't have enough people?
We have not done that, but that is actually an excellent, excellent suggestion and something we could start doing.
It's, it's been a sort of a common practice in the organizations I've been a part of that do risk assessments.
Yes.
And there are audit findings, to track the audit findings, and then particularize them and say the action taken on each one, and then have the leadership body of the organization make a decision about what to do about the risk.
Okay, well, in getting to that, all the audit reports are public. And we're now, well, not now, I just wanna make clear, we're audited multiple times a year, the schools are, by external auditors, and the audit reports are all public.
That is correct, and they can be found on the general government website in the financial section in the archives there. They've got the CAFERS going back, I think, at least 10 years.
Okay, so all of our audits would be in the annual CAFER?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Michael? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to the construction update. Dr. Jones.
Okay, and I'll keep it fairly short tonight. We are waiting on our date for Mount Daniel. As the school board knows, the first step was, it gets our package 2232 submission, gets reviewed by staff. It is out of staff review now, waiting on that hearing date. So, we will keep you, as well as the community, informed if we do hear of a hearing date. In the meantime, we will be meeting with the McLean, planning and zoning, just for informational with that reach out, and then also with the homeowners. And both of these meetings are in the next two and a half weeks. So, again, just continuing to work with the community in and around Mount Daniel. On the George Mason MEH, we do have the meeting, somebody referenced it, I think, already tonight, Thursday morning, 7:30 a.m., where we will be discussing that again. We took a couple of weeks' break from that project, I think, because the budget was so intensive with our meeting schedule. But again, that is 7:30 a.m., starting with a closed meeting, and then followed by open in the morning. And that's all I have for our construction tonight. And that's all I have for our construction tonight.
Thank you. Dr. Jones, any questions?
A quick question, and either Dr. Jones or Tom may be able to answer. At what point, or have we discussed the political outreach? I know we're doing the homeowner part of it right now, and with the McLean and the folks around the Mount Daniel area, but are we trying to organize some type of the political side of it, of the commissioners, potentially even talking with county board members?
We do have our attorney, who is engaged for us, with Hunt and Williams, who, you know, does help work through that process, and working with the commissioner. But I would say that, you know, that's one of the reasons we're even meeting with the planning and zoning with the McLean Association. I think that's what you're referring to as well. We're continuing all of that outreach and making ourselves available, and hopefully we'll get some feedback on the 2232.
Yes, I think the short answer is, that will happen. It hasn't happened yet, but when it does, believe me, you're going to be tapped quickly. Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Moving on to future agenda items. This is sort of twofold tonight. Normally, we ask if anybody has more items for future agendas. But if you could all take a look at the list that obviously has ballooned quite a bit, because we've had to push off because of the budget, we're now up to, well, this list has 20, but we have taken care of at least, I think, three of them. So, I guess, Dr. Jones, I would ask one, if you could do one thing, not for tonight, but to a certain extent prioritize these, if there are any that we need to get to sooner than others, simply because of timing.
Yeah, I do actually have it on the calendar, it's just that it kept changing. So, we are ready to go to get through all of these items through July, and we have tried to prioritize, and for instance, tonight, you're seeing like mindfulness before people go off on summer break. So, it wasn't that one topic's more important than the other, but we're trying to get staff in front of you while staff are still at work. So you'll see those items between now and the end of the school year. And then we will get an updated calendar to you. And I can't remember if the one you're looking at, well, I don't know if it was on this board agenda? I was thinking it was, oh, it is on here, I got it. Okay. Was making sure that we also added the work plan, and resetting school board priorities, which I don't, which was number 19 and 20. And those three things are huge. We usually spend anywhere from, you know, four to sometimes eight weeks, just getting through those. So, there is a tremendous amount of work to do.
And when you said, getting through them through July, you didn't mean we were going to get through all 20 by the end of July?
We will get through all, the first 17, and then once we finish those 17, then in July, August, September, we'll be coming back and talking about the school board priorities, as we always do, reflecting on the year that has just finished, and then looking forward. What is it that the school board wants to do? And, you know, I'm inclined to think that this year, we may want another large-scale visioning at the beginning of the school year, and that's something the school board will need to talk about. The work for the last several years was set, you know, from large community input, was very helpful. But it would be, I think, a good check to look and see if those priorities are still the priorities of the community. So, that will be July, August, September work.
All right, thank you. Any questions about anything we have on here? Mr. Writinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of comments. One, I think in the, and this, thank you, this is a very comprehensive list of, I think, the things we've been discussing. In the, both the review of the staff work plan and the school board priorities for FY '17, one of the issues that has come up that we need to make sure we build in is whether we want to stay with the current format of work plan. There's been some discussion about, you know, going back to having a longer strategy. And I, my mind's not made up either way, but I think there had been some discussion about whether or not we wanted to have a longer strategic plan, as opposed to the shorter triennial or work plan that we've got. The second thing is really more of a suggestion, and that is, I, I think that the technology discussion is going to be a longer one, and I'd suggest that one of the things the board might want to consider, given the level of interest in the community on technology, is doing what amounts to a public hearing on technology, or having a longer session where the public could participate. I think there would be a lot of interest around the technology topic, and seeing an extended discussion for that. So, that might be a bit more than just a long period of public comment, but I think we would want a very participatory process when we work through the technology questions.
Well, are you thinking more of a public forum, as opposed to a public hearing?
I don't know that I could specifically tell you what the difference between those is. If you'd like to-
And I think I would hope, too, that when we, when we do it, that if we're looking at this whole visioning component, so that we could really get a large group of people in the room together, because I think in technology, having our teachers at the table, having, you know, everybody there, is going to be really important. So I think that's a whole big discussion on how do we get that input. And in technology, that's, we're starting next week with the first panel, but that's just the beginning of trying to get in front of you, kind of what's happening in technology, how we're utilizing technology, what it looks like K-12. But some of that has to take place when the teachers are here. And we can get some people to come in the summer, but it's pretty hard.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay.
Can I just add two of the things that aren't on here?
Sure.
Just because, you know, I debated what goes on, what's not. You have requested an ESOL audit, and that will take, you know, an evening with the ESOL folks here. We also have a tech audit that will be coming up, which is not reflected right now on the calendar. And then also, the survey information will be on here at some point. So, I'm getting all of those on the calendar, but those are also items that just take a little bit of time, just to, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no one else, moving on to the superintendent's report.
I think for the essence of time, I'm going to pass and wait until the next meeting, given that some of us are trying to get to an association meeting tonight, that starts at nine.
Okay. Then we'll move on to board and liaison. Dorian, you want to kick off?
All right, so first of all, Lasso finished its print edition for the year. So if you go to the school, you can pick up a print edition. And Nine Muses, the literary magazine at Mason, also finished its print edition, and so you can pick one of those up at the school as well. I've pretty much, more or less concluded the process to look for my replacement. The student government is voting right now, through the evening, on who they select, who they select to be my replacement, and so then I'll make the recommendation to you by next meeting. And I'll make sure to work with that person to make the transition as seamless as possible. Other than that, not much going on. I mean, the school year's winding down.
All right, thank you. Starting left, Margaret.
Yeah, so, our ESOL advisory committee had, they're then going to be calling annual outreach to the ESOL community. This is the second one they've hosted. They serve pizza and ice cream and drinks for the kids, and so the whole, all the families come out. It's not just for the parents, but it's designed to provide information that ESOL parents need. And the teachers, the ESOL teachers did a fabulous job presenting how students are tested, how, you know, what the ESOL classes are like, and programs, after-school programs that are available to these students. It was, it was a really nice turnout. We had about probably 35 to 40, 40 guests, including kids. And parents were, you know, encouraged to ask questions and get clarification. We had Mary Gonzalez, our Spanish interpreter there. She interpreted for a small group. All in all, it was a really nice evening. The ESOL advisory committee does a fabulous job with organizing this event. So, we're hoping, we'll be doing this every year from now on.
Michael?
I will confess, between the budget, extended budget session and work, I've been AWOL on pretty much most of my commitments, but I've kept in touch with the GT advisory, who are working on the, on trying to get, trying to work on how they set up the GT, and I don't know if Leesa may be able to help with that, but that will probably be for another day. And also George Mason, I know they've been working on the all-night grad, so we'll reconnect with them, but nothing else to report tonight.
Okay. Mr. Webb?
Thank you. The Parks and Recs will be meeting, so they have not, the last meeting, I could not attend because of our presentation on the, what was it? The Mount Daniel project was being presented the same night as the last Parks and Recs meeting, and then we just voted on the daycare advisory updates, which is a really good program, and it's good that as they are transitioning from their part-time into only having full-time students, that they are that program that is self-sustaining and can fund themselves because of really the good work that they do. And I tell that group all the time, the amounts that we charge for that program is by far and away very, very affordable for the type of work that they do. But that will be it for my comments tonight.
Mr. Writinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also, due to the budget, was not able to attend the last support employees advisory committee meeting. The one thing I'd want to flag is, as related to the last meeting we had, and the presentation, that this Thursday, June 2nd, is Wear Orange Day, and so I'd ask everyone to consider having, mentioning to students the value of participating in that. Thank you.
Thank you. And you took the one thing I was going to be able to say, so, can't say that anymore. Dr. Jones already left, because she had to get to the MCA meeting at nine. What we have left is a series of minutes, and I wish Tom hadn't left, because in the past, we've gone through these parliamentary gymnastics about voting on minutes, where, you know, if people weren't at a meeting, they felt that they couldn't vote on it, so they had to abstain from it. And Tom pretty much said, "That's not correct." His main reason for it was, if you suddenly had, you know, four new members, then you wouldn't be able to approve the minutes from the previous month, if you had new members come in in January, and you hadn't done December, because then suddenly you wouldn't have a majority. So he said, "You're not approving," well, sorry, he sent me a text that I thought would clarify. But what you're doing is, you're not approving that everything in there is accurate, you are approving the fact that the minutes were taken, presented, and then if you have any questions, like I did with Marty about things that I specifically said, then you should raise them. But otherwise, he said, "We should all feel free to vote on minutes, whether or not we were in attendance." So if anybody needs more questions, we'll have to get that with, we'll have to get that from Tom. So, unless there are any objections, I will ask that there be unanimous consent approval of the minutes for February 2nd, February 6th, February 9th, April 12th, April 19th, April 26th, May 13th, and May 17th. Seeing no objection, the minutes are approved. We have no additional materials for board review. Does anyone have any final comments before we adjourn? No? All right, thank you.